Called this June 16th, Jackson County Commission Meeting ordered. Have a roll call.
District one.
Present.
District two.
Present.
District three.
Present.
District four.
Present.
For Ms. President so we can conduct business this evening. We'll have our invocation by Mr. Porter and our flag by Mr. Gattner.
For God our Father, we're blessed to be your servants and thank you for that chance and that opportunity to serve others. We thank you for these men that are here today that have chosen to serve their community and do so gratefully. Thank you for them, thank you for the families. We pray that you'll be with all of those men and women in armed services that are in danger right now and in harm's way. We pray you'll be with them. How we pray for peace all over this world, we know that there are difficult times in the Mideast and other areas. And we pray that sensibility will prevail and somehow those conflicts can be resolved without further loss of life to anyone. So God, we pray for all these things. We pray that you'll continue to watch over us and say, "This is Christ's name, we pray."
Amen.
The life of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is to approve the minutes from our meeting of May 27th. Do we have any changes to those minutes before we proceed? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes that was presented?
I'm moving.
Motion, we have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Okay. Next item is approval of our agenda. We have three items on the business agenda, meeting agenda tonight. Any changes before we proceed? Do we have a motion to approve the three items that was presented?
So move.
Motion to approve the agenda, I'm sorry, presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. We have no old business, so we'll go straight on to new business. And the first item is a motion to approve the change in the process of hiring six-month temporary employees. And you have, we should have, we have. We had put together a resolution regarding, regarding the temporary hiring policy. We can recess from meeting over there if you'd like to. I think you all want me to go do that? That's my mistake. Let me run and grab that real quick, take just a couple moments. The full, we proceed with that. Okay, we'll dig right back. I'd actually resume my policy for that. This was discussed at the previous work session as regarding the temporary hiring policy, or hiring for temporary employees. Currently, we have one temporary employee work for the county and has approved through the Department of Recreation, but each summer. I do, I am asking for another one this afternoon. Could we pass this or not, for another temporary position, but those are the only two at the time. The way this, I guess you could work out to what happens to changes in policy.
Right now, the hire a temporary employee, which is solely for six months. You have to go through the same process, the department heads have to go through the same process of advertising, interviewing, to get a temporary employee. So what this would do, if it's adopted for temporary employees, it would shorten the process to allow the department head to either take applications and do the interviews or not, if they're discretion, and then make the recommendation. The recommendation still has to come to the commission to hire the temporary employee that can't be for more than six months. Specified as six calendar months consecutively, not intermittently. So if they're hired, it would be for six straight calendar months. And they are not, would not be eligible for in-house promotions if they wanted to apply for a full-time position that can do that, but they'd have to go through the same process everybody else does.
I think all of these points were presented last week, but are there any other questions or comments on this item? Is there a motion to approve of those presented?
I see a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? If anything, so a motion and second, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Next, our item is a motion to approve agreement and recommendation from the probate judge regarding temporary employee. The probate judge, as noted earlier, is requesting that we hire temporary employees. The reason for this is we're currently using one of the probate judge's employees part-time to do some of our license inspection work. So the judge has asked if we actually provide a, or actually he's going to pay for the position, a temporary position to fill for the time being until we determine fully if we're going to utilize that person full-time or what, you know, the goal of commission will be for that position. So he has agreed to pay for this out of his index funds and he's asked that we approve this temporary position for him, again, to be paid out of his funds beginning as soon as possible, so that they can take that time and we can even utilize that individual a little bit more for the license inspection work. So questions or comments on this? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the recommendation as well as the agreement?
I'm moving the motion.
Motion, we have a second.
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Okay. Next item, motion to approve litigation and insolvent in the year 2013 for the Revenue Commission Office. This is something that's done every year. The numbers you see on here are strictly related to the state. This is the correction on the numbers for the state's calculation. Mr. Board of Deputies, what do you have there?
I really don't. This is something that the Revenue Commission Department has been there every year and they do the calculations.
We received it this afternoon. I think it's something that they say they try to get on the first meeting agenda every month. Try to work with them and getting that to a work session first, but are there any questions or comments on this?
Are these received funds and we're reimbursing? Are these funds not correct?
I think it's a possibility of both of them, if it's there within the numbers that need to be corrected and in those numbers, whatever, to show what actual number should be.
He will be able to cover these areas.
Yeah, and what this, this form actually is just for the state to give our Revenue Commissioner credit on his report. It doesn't really have anything to do with funding money to anybody. I mean, not to say that there won't be some, but this form is strictly go to the state to give Mr. Crawford credit for this.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve this form? Motion, we have a second.
Sure.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Okay. All right, we'll move our comments from the commission after the work session. And before we continue with the work session, I'm here to hand a motion to adjourn the meeting, open the work session.
Just move.
Motion, we have a second.
Sure.
And all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. So we're looking up the work session. We've had no one sign up to speak this evening. We'll move right into our discussion items for the work session. First item is regarding the CGI communication agreement. This, I believe, was presented to you last week regarding our video showcase program. This was discussed in the previous work session. I think we discussed it once in the fourth meeting in the previous work session. What this is, is this company would like to come into Jackson County, do some videos for us and place that on our website. We are producing a new website, so it kind of go hand to hand with that. There's no cost to the county, the way they earn their funds is by going to local businesses and then ask for sponsorship from those businesses. So the businesses will actually have ads. When someone clicks on this link, it'll show the business ad and then show the video, of course, on the video for Jackson County. I think there are a total of six or seven videos that they play on. We did mention it before, I think, I wanted everybody to go to the Scottsboro City website and take a look at it to kind of get an idea of how it looks. And did you have any concerns or thought on this, Mr. Porter?
I really did not. I haven't had a chance to review it some time ago. The only issue that I will make sure that the pressure to understand is that GCI owns the information, it's not county information. Once they produce it, it belongs to GCI and they have the right to use it however they want to.
So being in a work session, I'd like to get this on the agenda for next Monday if there are no concerns with it. Are there any other questions or concerns at this time? If there's no objection, then I'd like to place it on the agenda for next Monday night. If there are any concerns for that item, we'll discuss it again Monday, but otherwise we hope to proceed. Okay, next item is regarding the SERPRO agreement. We all have a copy of this item. And I'll just ask, if Ross, if you're here with us, to kind of explain what this is, HVC duct cleaning, and then you can kind of share some of the benefits. I think it'll be very beneficial for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight. And I've got copies, do they already have copies of this document?
I believe they do. Is that the same one you're giving me?
Same one, yeah, and I've got this, how about that?
Okay, yeah, that's fine, if you'll.
Okay. Take it out. I think they should be just right enough for us to move down there. The top sheet is a sheet that addresses what duct cleaning is all about, the benefits of it, some of the information we get from Environmental Protection Agency, various national sources about potential energy savings as well. Just to add a real quick framework to why I'm here tonight is I had talked to Matthew a few weeks ago and I had walked through courthouse with one of the lead maintenance guys and we looked at some return, a couple of returns and it was, it was no surprise to me because like most homes or most commercial buildings or governmental buildings, duct cleaning is not something that's usually top of mind. Some people have it done every four or five years, as would be recommended by the industry, and others have it done once every 10 years. Most people have never had it done at all. I don't know if this courthouse has ever had duct cleaning. If it has, it's probably been many, many years. So we took a look at that and it was obvious there was a need for it. And you'll see on that, that top sheet that points out that 25 to 40 percent of air is wasted, according to the U.S. Department of Energy. But make a long story short, the more buildup of grime and dust and gunk and dirt and contaminants and whatever words you want to use, the more buildup of that is in the duct system, then the harder your system's going to have to work to keep the temperature where it needs to be in the building unless you're going to have higher energy costs than you'd like to have. Also, over time, the air quality is going to be pretty poor in any building or home that's never had a duct cleaning or have spent a long time. You know, another potential benefit, I don't think it's on this top sheet, is that over time you should see employee absenteeism reduced because if people have allergies and sinus issues, asthma, sun and so forth, if you have poor air quality in the building, they're going to have more days where it's missed. One of the big pieces of feedback that we've gotten from a number of folks that have had to do duct cleaning is that they're constantly having to dust their office furniture, and I'm talking about the courthouse, but jobs we have done, they're dusting our office furniture, dusting furniture in their home every day or two. We do a duct cleaning and they call back or shoot us an email back saying, "Hey, this is great, now I'm dusting my furniture once every two weeks." So you see from a day or two dusting, dusting your furniture once every two weeks, what a tremendous difference in air quality that makes. It's not, it's not something that you can see. Sometimes we have done commercial jobs and residential jobs where the occupants or the homeowners can actually see the odor coming out of the vents. And by the time it gets to that point, well, it's truly, I do have a picture here of one of the returns that I'll share with you and just pass it around on that iPad. That's one of the returns, I believe it was, you can just hit cancel up there, I'm sorry. It's where it's in the way of that picture, you can just cancel that. That's right across the hall, I believe, approximately from where the county commission boardroom is. And that, that's typically what you'll see when you take the return cover off of a return that has never been cleaned or has not been cleaned in a number of years. So if you can imagine that circulating in the environment and imagine all of that being removed from each return, each duct, each air handling system, you can just imagine what that'll do for air quality. Also attached underneath that cover sheet is probably more than you would ever want to know about the National Association of Duct Cleaning. We would be working in conjunction with SERPRO Birmingham, which is our corporate office, and they carry various certifications as we do. They have a lot of specially trained people in commercial duct cleaning, so we would be partnering up with them. That's one of the great things about SERPRO, whether it's water damaged ducts, fire mold, if a job is big enough that we just have the people that can do it, but not enough of them that are trained to do it, then we can partner with SERPROs all over the state. And SERPRO Birmingham does a lot of this kind of work. So they came down, looked at blueprints with us, walked through the building with a couple of the maintenance guys and put together the back sheet proposal, which you see is the bottom line cost and it breaks it down by unit. We've identified 11 units. Chairman and I talked about this most likely needing to be done after hours. I won't absolutely say that it couldn't be done during hours, but just for the noise of the work, the traffic in the halls, probably the smartest to do it after hours. And really, in looking at the benefits, I would say in no particular order, your energy savings, your air quality, your reduced employee absenteeism, I mean, you could go on and on, employee morale, those kinds of things.
You have any questions or comments on this? I think the biggest, one of, one of the bigger things is, as noted, I'm sure there's some energy loss and there'll be some energy savings if we move forward with this, but one of the biggest things, I think, is just the quality of the work environment that will come from this. I do have a question on the quote there, the last one, where it says, "The cost of clean AC units." We're having a spring maintenance right now and I'm wondering if that might actually be covered, if they may be taking care of the cleaning of those units as it is, but that's something that may not be necessary if we can talk about what they entail a little bit more.
Okay.
But that may not be necessary there, as we've got that spring maintenance where they're supposed to be taken care of.
Okay. Well, what we can do is get that together and get into some detail and see if there's a match, what you're saying as to what they're already going to be doing, and if so, sort of factor that in our difficulty.
And any other questions or comments on this?
Mr. Pitchard, I've got one. Will you perform an airflow test before and after? Is that part of how y'all go about cleaning a system?
I need to find that out. So I'm not 100% sure about that, but I'll give that answer back to y'all as a group.
Extra airflow would be nice to know what it is prior to cleaning it.
Right, right.
And the other thing that I'd like to know, this air pressure, some of it's 135 PSI that I noticed, what happens when the duct, this duct works on, what happens when these seals, you start to have leakage, more leakage? Is sealing this ductwork part of this proposal?
Sealing, sealing the ductwork.
So you go seal the ductwork once it's completed, cleaned?
Right. If we notice, if we notice any damage that would cause us to call timeouts and, you know, there's, there's enough holes or here's a large hole or two, we would recommend replacing, you know, this run or this piece of the system. We would stop cleaning that up then and the rest of the building may be fine. Between anything we see where it wouldn't make sense for us to clean it, we would call timeout then and recommend that extract and company take a look at potential replacement. And we occasionally run into that in a commercial or residential business when we, we stop our job, that's something like that. Now, I'll get some more information on sealing too. I know that we will, we will seal for small holes, but to what extent, depending on how big the hole is and how well that sealing fits into that.
The joints is mainly the concern, you know, with the vibration and the.
Yeah, it was, but it's, it's always, it's unacceptable.
Right. That, that again will be where the airflow test before and after will come into play. Some of it you're not going to be able to see, we don't know if it was an error because of the pressure that we put on the system or not. And one other thing too, now I've got one more question. Does this have to be as a whole entirety or can this be broke out for you? Maybe just decided we want to do two or three to see that work?
Absolutely.
Is the price good for doing it that way? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, your AC units, if you tend to work, what do y'all do to clean? What is your plan to entail? No, our, our service contractors are going to clean the major coils.
And would you say that again? Did you say something about coils?
Yeah, that's, that's what the service contractor is going to do.
We, we clean, we clean the coils and what we call the motor blower assembly. We clean the motor blower assembly, we clean the coils. And I'll, I'll get a little more detail about that and see if we have a match. But in, in those general terms, motor blower assembly and coils, we do clean those. So it sounds like there's some commonality there, but I want to make sure that it's, whatever you're talking about with maintenance, it's really the same thing we do and get back that out of it.
You're, you're all going to use the robots and there is just not access.
We, we have a, like a rotor, we have a rubber brush that goes in up into the ducts. And Matthew's asking me earlier about insulation inside the ducts. We do lots of duct cleaning where the insulation's on the inside and typically that insulation is, of course, not loose, it's, you know, matted pretty tightly to the ducts, but we do have to, on occasion, use a less aggressive method with that brush to make sure we don't damage anything. But we are licensed and bonded and we get in here and go crazy with the equipment and we're hurting ourselves. We're going to have to make a effort.
I know there were, you know, other things we wanted to look at and we can firmly want to do this. We are having a small energy, I guess, audit through the month of July, so if we were to do this, actually, probably not do it until August. And that'd be a good time to kind of see if we save any interview by doing this as well, if this is the first project we go forward with. So what I'd like to do, give us a little more time to think on this and see if we have any other questions, put this on the next work session, that first work session in July, see if we have any other questions, see what other opportunities may exist, and then try to see what we can do to move forward from then. Of course, I give you some time also to get some answers to some of the questions.
Yeah, we have a little bit more questions on the, on the.
And we can give, give you or your contact person with the person that is doing the, the company that's doing the cleaning right now, so that you can, they can talk with them and see what services are overlapped and then.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions or comments at this time?
I'll leave y'all with this too. Mr. Mann, take one. Also, damn, that's a brochure on our duct cleaning and I've got a, I've got a card in each one of those. If y'all have any questions, feel, feel free to give me a call about this or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next item is regarding HR consulting agreement, agreement. You all need to go through the process of working through the HR department and I think we've seen where there's been several policies that have, have been amended or rewritten. And of course, there are several, several more that really need to be reviewed and gone through, along with looking at face scale and organizational charts and job descriptions for all our county employees. Mr. Manning in the HR, Ms. Willis and myself have met with Representative from Rocket City HR to discuss the possibility of looking at some updates to our different items. The agreement that you see before you here is regarding the personnel handbook. The personnel handbook hasn't been updated since 2005. I know there have been a few changes since that time, but they have not been included in the handbook or really amended in the handbook. So the purpose of, of this initial action would be to enter into a contract with Rocket City HR, leave us an open contract through, for a year. It would allow us to do whatever items we needed to. But initially, of course, the first statement of work that we'd like to pursue would be this revise or revision of the technical kind of personnel handbook. Now, you have on item two here, you have the cost for this and not to exceed number. The reason that we kind of want to take this first statement of work and see how it's going to work, we don't believe it's going to take near the time that's estimated to complete this personnel handbook. We know there are several changes that need to be made to it, but we don't think it's going to take near as much time and we don't think that it'll be anywhere near that dollar amount. However, we did want to put a limit in there in case we did see excessive need for personnel handbook. So what you have before you is a statement of work for the revision of the personnel handbook, services agreement with Representative from Rocket City HR, as well as a provision recommendations. And what you have in the last page, recommendations, that's just, and several items that need to be changed, but there are several more as we go through the process that I think that will need to be done. And Mr. Porter, you have time to review it there.
I have. It is pretty simple. It's at will, it's for a particular price per hour, around the time they spend on it with a cap on it. And I'll just say, there's not any question in my mind that the personnel policy here, the handbook needs to be reviewed and revised. Right now, there are just so many conflicting provisions. Every time an issue comes up, we have to really interpret our own policy to be able to know what it really says. So I think this would be something to be beneficial to the county.
And if, what, again, the purpose of doing this, this is the smallest of the projects that was discussed with her. If we move forward with this, see how this project goes, if it does work out very well, then I would like to pursue, you know, further with personnel policy, with the job descriptions, with organizational charts, with face scales, you know, moving to the larger, which of course, the contract will leave it open to that, but the commission will have to approve every statement of work, so we won't be able to start another job without the commission approving the next statement of work if we do decide to move forward. So questions, comments, thoughts on this?
Will we be ready to print the books once this is complete?
Yes. What will happen, she'll go through the whole process, meet with HR if we need, the commission type representation, meeting with the commissioner, but go through the whole process and have it set 100% ready to print, so that all we have to do is take the printer. And again, looking at the breakdown of the hours, which I will try to email everybody to take a look at, the breakdown of the hours on this, I really don't believe it'll take as much time, but if it does, it's, we're getting probably a lot more than, than the cost of it. Any other questions or comments? And I would propose that we pay for this if we choose to go forward with this. We did budget additional funds in contract services for this year that are not being utilized because we changed the way that we're doing our maintenance agreements for HVAC, so there's some savings there. So I propose that we just use this, or use budgeted money for this. There's going to be no increase in the cost of the monitoring.
Which fund is that?
That'll be on the commission's fund under contract services. Any other questions or comments? Is there any opposition then to placing this on the agenda for next Monday night? Okay, if there's no opposition, then we'll place that on the agenda at that time. The next item is regarding knuckle bowl for the Public Works Department. I know this is right up to speed, this work session. Mr. Lev, do you have anything else to add on this for tonight?
I've got some quotes, but I think things here also got some.
I was out, I thought I had copies of these, we've just got more, how we got the price around looking at. The top of here, obviously the price, this is kind of a top of the line deal, it's coming from Ingram Equipment, this is the company that we purchased our yardage trucks from, we've always had a very good fluke with them, top of the line, E1. And, you know, this is, this is just to tell you how far you can go with it. It's about $180,000 to $200,000, depending on what you put on it. He also has one, Ingram does, that they are taking it on trade from Madison County. They're trading and they're getting one of these larger units and I believe the price on it's 62,000, I believe. Right there, that we're looking at. And this one in Madison County's got, one thing about it, it's a, it's got a little smaller bed and it's got a 24 cubic yard bed. The larger, we've got a 40 cubic yard. And as my understanding, you go up to about a 40 cubic yard. So you know, it just kind of depends on what you, you know, what can afford, first of all, and what we need. There's also a place Mr. Jeffy told us about in Chattanooga. We just had a good time to get up and look at it. We have, we want to get a prior, kind of, I'd like to see service. You know, they're just hard to find. We got on the internet and looked around and you'll find one that seems like it's a good deal and you know, have a half million miles on it. So we found some that's up north, but I don't think we want none of those because they're going to be exposed to salt and ice and you know, salt.
I've got a question on this one.
Yes.
Can we do leasing like we did with, you know, like with this equipment?
I think that company will do that, yes. And what Mr. Jeffy's talking about, as we deal with a truck, we, we see it and we have to fly a hundred or so lease payments to the purchase up to so long. And this company here might be a little different. They might hold back a percent or something, but I can check with them on that if we decide.
Size yard boxes on that one you got?
This is 40.
40 yard?
This is a 20.
That's 24.
On the new one?
The new one's 40. I think a 20, I just worry a 20 is a bit too small.
24, yeah, it would be a little small. And like I said, you know, there's probably going to be some other stuff out there. We've just, we've been looking for a week and actually spent two days looking, you know, that's.
Well, this one that I found, Peterson Industries has this one on the ground. It's a 2014, we bought for $129,000. The unit's available. It's a freightliner. What's the cubic feet? It's 24, 24 cubic feet, same as the other one.
Same as the small one.
The one is 24 right there, it's like 62,000. It's a U in Madison County.
I would, I would think we want to go with the 40 to be sure. I mean, we've got a big county, we're looking to have to haul it back.
This 180 is a 40 yard?
Yes.
Yes. There's something on the Mac, there's something on the Mac chassis also. What I want to mention about the one from Madison, that's 62,000. It's on an international truck. And I'm not here to, you know, downplay anybody's equipment or stuff. But we've had some very bad, well, international equipment at public works department. We just don't, we don't get to service out of them. But we get with a Mac or a Freightliner or, you know, something of that nature. If that truck was on a, if it was on a Mac chassis for that price, I would, I'd feel real comfortable with the price. And even say, we'll make do with a 24 yard. International's what, really.
Something that serves me is going to Skyline or Bryant. When a storm happens and you, you know, you're having trouble grabbing it and run all the way over wherever the duct is, you're going back over the 40. You'd better get a lot more. I know it's more expensive, but I'd rather get something that's going to last than I had to do something. You know, it's going to be that trouble will like that and I agree with you on that.
That, that larger truck is, Jefferson County's taken delivery of two or three of those, I think is what they told me. They're building those for them.
It'll swing all the way around Madison County and you could load other dump trucks.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yes. You can basically, any of them, they'll have a 270 degree swing, most of them. You don't want to swing out over your hood, but it'll be 270 degrees.
If we had a situation where there's a big, we could.
Yeah, we can load dump trucks, yeah. You can just pull them up aside and load the side.
And currently, well, I mean, how do we, how do we handle this process as it is right now?
Uh, not very well. We've got a, we've got our track hoe that we just purchased. We've got what you call a thumb on it that can pick up, you know, trees and it's, it's better for like trees instead of brush and stuff. And we load them on the dump trucks that we have.
It's got steel tracks too, and you're not going to let it dump load.
No, I'm not. Well, so, you know, yeah. Some, if we're on a good road, we'll use our great oil. We've got a, we've got a, what do they call them, wedge or something on it, it mashes it together.
You've got a grapple, really?
Grapple, yeah, it's kind of a, they don't call it a grapple, they've got another name for it, but it's similar to that. If it's a good paved road, though, we'll use the great oil. It's slow, you know, it just.
You've got to have that and a dump truck.
That and a dump truck. And dump trucks, you tear your tar pile pieces where you start loading brush. And as soon as you do that, then you get a ticket for going down the road with the messed up tar, flinging that right away.
We will have to bid this. My understanding is, I think, you said it also, we have to bid unless, or is there any other circumstance? This needs to be bid out.
I think it would be. He did mention the possibility that there might be, depending on what one, it might be on the national joint purchasing alliance. And we're still checking on that.
This, this one at Peterson's on the joint purchasing alliance.
What would that one be with the larger?
It said between 20 and 30 cubic yards for this chassis. You can get a 30 with a Freightliner. It's a business class M2. But I'll give you the information, you can call, call this company.
Do, you said you don't know if this one, you showed us, is on the joint purchasing line?
Uh, not for sure, we're just still checking on it. Y'all, y'all give me a couple more weeks, next work session, I'll have, I'm sure, with Mr. Lev and I will, we'll have more.
Who's on that commission for a couple of work? I guess it would be best if, if you would get the information to come back with a recommendation of how you want to proceed or which one you want to proceed and we can bid out or we can, if it's on the joint purchasing line, purpose, however, we need to, you know, that work for everybody. And if we were to do this, we would pull it for Fund 100. I mean, it was Mr. Manning, he returned the department funds. I know we have funds there, make sure that the necessary amount of funds are there for fruition. And we can utilize that to purchase this piece of equipment. I think it's something that'll save us time. To, you know, send two folks out on a job to do this instead of three or four with a dump truck and whatever other equipment we need. But also to be quick to come back and forth.
We have flagman and everything too. I'll, I'll tell you one more option. I'm a little hesitant about telling this, but Will Hager and myself, he's with Ingram, we talked about it. I know we talked about roll off trucks for our solid waste department. Of course, if y'all recall, that price was like 250 or 60 for that National Joint Purchasing Alliance. They roll off trucks and 40 dumpsters. They also make a roll off knuckle boot grapple body that you can, you can switch back and forth. And Commissioner Lev, I believe it was about $90,000 for that, that you could slide back and forth on. But that being said, you know, if we're, if we're in the, we're in the roll off dumpster business and we're going to pick them up on a regular basis, I, I can see that being a, you know, some conflict with, as timing. Taking it off and putting it on and stuff. But that option is available and is out there.
Any other questions or comments? Do you want to bring that to the next work session then? So we'll have that on the work session, first work session in July. Next item regarding district lines, Mr. Porter?
Mr. Kim, we talked about this at the last meeting a little bit. It's been subject discussion for actually a number of years. About the district lines, I think I sent everybody a letter today. How long would I be able to find? And I can find no requirement that the district lines be surveyed and that there be a legal description, a survey legal description to district lines. And this has been going over years, all the way back to first thing I was ever finding. From the commission standpoint, 1995, there was a question made with that family regarding district lines. And then actually, the issue of district lines goes all the way back to 1800s. Early, I can find 1878 was the time that the county was authorized to draw district lines. But I never could find anything showing where they had been drawn. But there is a map that has been recognized for 50 years as being the district lines. So my recommendation is that the commission take that map that's been used for 50 years and relied upon as being authoritative and adopt that as the district lines. And I'll answer the question.
Do you need any type of description with that map as far as the line itself, the size of it?
I'm not saying you, I'm not saying you couldn't come up with one if, if the.
I've, I've looked at it. The commission lines that's drawn on there would be very hard to identify and write in the way they're drawn. I showed Chairman Hodges this morning. If we could shift them a little bit and get them over to some actual physical features, you know, we could write the whole description in four hours.
We don't have the authority to do that though, really.
You don't, okay.
The only problem we're going to have is going to go, is going to go back to somebody who runs for an office that lives right where that line is drawn. And then they're going to say, well, how takes that line?
Can, can we go laser line, is there, can you put them in a program and make that line?
Well, like, like the map as exists now, Commissioner, like of a skyline, well, you're probably familiar with. We're coming out of Tennessee, the line between you and Commissioner Venable is, if I were going to describe it, the best way we could describe it would be the crest of the mountain, you know, where it crests. And who can determine, you know, you could send four surveyors out there and get four whatever crest of mountains. It would be, it'd be hard to do. Like, even if we do what Mr. Porter's saying, you know, adopt the map, still, and what Mr. Jeffy's saying, you know, what kind of line? I don't, I don't know. I just can't see us tying it down.
In order to get a full legal description, we would have to get a local law process. So that, that's something if we want to pursue, we can pursue. For the time being, though, it might be best to adopt the map we have in place and then discuss with the legislature or the upcoming, me going to like, something, that might be when the time comes, what the possibilities be of identifying the district.
If we adopt this as an authority, will we also be the final say where some, if there is a discrepancy? How do you?
Somebody will have a lot of love of the skyline mountains and they're running District 3 or they're running, how many District 3 or District 4? Well, ultimately, court will give you that. If there was a challenge as to whether somebody lives in 3 or 4 or 1 or 2, then ultimately, the court would have to make that determination. But as far as determining where that line is, the commission would be ultimately the authority for that. And I understand that there are some questions in different places because of that, that it's going to be hard.
If we overlay that map and, and put the lines to where the lines actually don't cover up, you know, you can kind of like a 3D where you can see the line. And you can determine, I know it can be done, I'm just asking.
Still, it gets back into the thickness of the line, you know what I mean? This line over here represents a sacred mile. That mile.
But you've got a, you know, you've got a magic marker marked right now, you cannot see. If it was laid over in the line drawn, you know what I mean, kind of like 3D, where you can see through that line?
I'm saying if you lay it on top of somebody's head where that line.
Well, that's where you have, that's where you would definitely have a, an issue with.
You're going to have that problem, even if you had a legal description that laid it in the middle of someone's home, you're going to have that problem.
These, these existing lines, Commissioner, are just, I mean, in some places they've got good, you know, good physical features they follow. But in other places, I don't know, you know, I don't know how anybody could get it set out and go out on the, on the ground and mark it, for example. Some of them follow creeks. But they'll follow it for a little while and then they'll jump off a tree and go down a quarter, quarter line or a, or a head drill or something like that. Because they some, so just some, some of these places, they're that, there's just no features they're following.
Any other questions or comments?
The immediate resolution is not perfect, no question about it. That's better than where we are now, that is, no official, this measure.
So do we have a recommendation then to put that on the agenda to go ahead and adopt what we have in place? Confirm that as a line and then we can look again?
How many, do we put it on the agenda?
Any objection placing that on the agenda next week? All we need is that map, right? There's no objection, then we'll place that on the map, or that map on the agenda next week. Okay, next item is assistance for the Boy Scouts. Camp Jackson has been doing a lot of work, a lot of volunteers have been doing a lot of work out there to bring that back up to the level that it was before the April 2011 tornadoes. And they've asked for a little bit of help, assistance from the counties. All of these, two of them, grabber, all that, they purchased a grabber from another source. We would just be handling that, transferring that to this camp. In order to do that, we need to confirm that that is of a public interest. And I think we'll need to vote on that next week if there's an objection to moving forward with that assistance. They've done a lot of work out, like I said, they've had a lot of folks volunteer to assist in that. And of course, Camp Jackson is a beautiful place for everybody in Jackson County to enjoy and to not get up to the pinnacle. I know a lot of folks do that, I know, but it's a fantastic place for, for the citizens of Jackson County to enjoy. So I think it's important that we help in any way possible. This is a very small way, but a very good way, I think, that we can assist as possible. So any questions or comments on that?
How many loads of gravel are they needing and what kind of time would it take for trucks?
I can't remember that, that number of loads. I think we've got a couple of months to do.
They asked for 25 loads?
25. And we've got a couple, two or three months to do the work. They're, they'll be, they've got a contractor with a liking spread, so all we're doing is dropping off the load and their contractor will bring it in.
Commissioner, I've spoken with Chairman about what we're going to try to do is get some of them in, volunteer truck drivers, come in on Fridays and do it. So it don't shut us down.
We can break that over time, right? There's no objection, we'll place that on the agenda next week. Next item is the catchment of water treatment program. We have two proposals from two companies regarding the water treatment. I know, I think we discussed last week to put this out to bid. We can do that, however, as well under the bid law. And we do have a couple of key proposals and we'll report them if necessary. You have Guardian DIPCO, which is the company that has been providing the service over the past several years. As far as I'm aware, there's been no, no concern with that company. And then you have Jake Marshall, which has taken over or has done his doing with business spray maintenance for the AC system. We're working with them a little bit, they seem to be a very good company as well. You'll see that one is just a few hundred dollars lower than the other one. So I'd like to, I'd like to place this on the agenda next week to vote on either way we go. I think they're close enough, an easy one to define as far as the cost. One concern I did have, and Mr. Jeffy would like to have a little bit more with you. I think there's a price of yours on the second page of Jake Marshall's recommendation with price for boiler treatment. I'm not real familiar with that, but that's not something that's being done right now. And I guess we maybe, that's what we need to begin with.
I think we should, that year, get on it before, if we have a lot of. The only, the only thing I like to say is, I don't, I don't know Guardian and the company. But as far as Jake Marshall's service, the only thing that I would be in favor of them doing is because they're going to be doing a PM. Guardian is a chemical company where I studied and they know chemicals. But if they're going to be out there working on chemicals for a cooling tower, it would be nice to have a technician that lights up there if there's a problem in there or a valve or they're going to notice it right as well. Where these people ain't going to know that problem, so. They're $300 cheaper and then you get a better technical person doing the job. That, that's my opinion.
Any other questions or comments? I will get Guardian to submit a price for boiler treatment. Hopefully we'll have that by next Monday. If there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday to go with one or both of those treatments as far as the boiler and the cooling tower. No, any questions? That concludes the items for discussion. Move on to our reports. Mr. Wyler?
Yes, sir.
Or Porter? I don't think, Keith Dickson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jeffy?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had the police fire chief from Flat Rock, Massalia. And he can just comment to me about chainsaws. They've done a lot of work here and it's cleaned up. He wants to help them out with chainsaws. I think a lot of them, they were using their personal chainsaws and I wanted to bring it up to Commissioner Lee so it's something we can discuss or think about. You know, I would think it'd be right to just go ahead and buy a few chainsaws for a couple of fire departments. But I think we need to look at, because they are a safety county. because they are saving county a lot of money. The road department goes out there and big hail to them when we have storms, I can't come through. So I think it would be a good idea for us to look and see what was new to try and help the fire departments out with, with the chainsaws and all the emergency equipment.
I think, I think there are some funds we might be able to look at to utilize for that. But I'll also get with Fire Marshal, I know they've got that fire tax and there's a substantial amount in there. They may be able to, or get some funds from, from that fire tax. I'll check with him, if you want me to get back with you?
Yeah.
Anything else? Mr. Benham?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes, sir.
Only thing I'd like to say, we'll begin having our budget meetings. Everyone, I think, should have gotten a letter in their boxes regard, from Mr. Manning regarding setting up meeting for the budget. Now that we've had a year under our belt with this, I guess you could say, new budget, and there's still a lot of changes that need to be made, and we can understand it more and more. But hopefully, then we'll have an even better understanding and have a better process in place. So we'll be setting that up, and the way that process will work, we'll be meeting with the department heads and commissioners initially to kind of go over everything, and then we'll meet again with them separately to go over any details that they may be requesting or things that they can help us out on as far as reducing our budget. When we start to sit down, our first budget meeting in July, we'll try to have numbers for you on exactly where we believe we're going to be on the overall budget. We begin with a roughly a million dollar deficit or $900,000, which is growing a little bit due to some other shortcomings. But we found a couple of possibilities where reductions have been made through this year. So hopefully, we'll be in a better situation along with the local losses of past. I think we'll be able to put around $400,000 or $500,000 still as far as the deficit goes, where we need to consider some other possibilities and pursue some permanent local losses coming here. So we'll try to have that number at the first budget meeting that we have in July. And we'll try to meet every other week as far as after the commission meetings to update additional information on the overall budget. With that, that concludes everything we have for this evening. We entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion, we have a second.
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.